Okay, good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call the budget session to order at this time. If you will, if you're not speaking, if you will mute your lines, just so we can prevent some of the background noise. Please remember that if you're asking a question or whatever, allow just a couple of seconds for if someone is on mute, to give them time to unmute. And with that being said, Shannon, would you like to go ahead and do a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mayor Proton Dunn?
Present.
Councilman Lee?
I'm here.
Councilman Stevens?
Present.
Councilman Scott?
Present.
Councilman Barber?
Present.
Councilman Wood?
Present.
Councilman Rabel?
Present.
We have everyone present, Mayor.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Also present-
Who else do we have on line?
Also present tonight will be the town manager, Mike Scott. I believe Ted Cradle will also be present to address any questions. And Gary Johnson, Parks and Rec Director, will also be available for questions.
Okay, alright, great. Well, we'll go ahead and get started then. Our first business item this evening is consideration and request for approval to enter into negotiations with Carolina Recreation and Design for a design build of the splash park at Smith Collins. I'll turn that over to Gary and/or Mike. Thanks, Mayor. Mike, do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Okay. Before you tonight, we're just requesting the approval to negotiate with Carolina Recreation and Design for the design and then the build of the splash pad. We sent out a request for qualifications, we got three back. Got one from Carolina Recreation Design, one from Great Southern Recreation, and the other one from Vortex. And all three are capable, well-known, very reputable companies. We were just more impressed with Carolina Recreation and Design to help us design, and then they will go into the build aspect. The splash park has not been designed. All three sent in, I guess you would say, possibilities or starting points or reference point. But we will start from the very, very beginning and design it to what we need and what we want, and then go from there. So there's no design in place, it's just a start. Those were just starting points, and we can scratch those and start from fresh if that's what we need to do. And so all we're asking is for approval to begin the design process for this company to design and build the splash park. Okay, alright. So Gary, as far as this specific company, I mean, what type of qualifications? I mean, have they designed? Yeah, they've done- Ones that you've seen, or you know, you've seen examples of, or whatever? They've done some in Fuquay, they've done some in the Raleigh area, in the Triangle area. They're currently working on one in Irwin. And so, yeah, they've done quite a few throughout North Carolina.
Mayor, this is Travis.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Travis.
This was on the agenda for our last session, and I had spoken briefly with Councilmember Lee before that session, and there were some concerns. I don't think we understood the design or layout, and we didn't have much time to discuss it, and everybody wasn't able to be at that meeting. So that's why we asked for it to be tabled for the future. I don't know if he's had a chance to talk with the manager or not, and he get the questions that we had answered. But I just wanted to say I look forward to getting that. I think there was some concerns about the pictures that were presented. I'm not sure, Councilman Lee can certainly speak up if he feels like he needs to.
Okay. Alright. Any questions or anything for Gary at this time? Alright, so Gary, so you're looking, you're working just authorization to move forward with a design? Yeah, just to move forward with this particular company, Carolina Recreation Design, to design and then build the project.
I make a motion we approve.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to move forward? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Aye, Marlin Lee.
Mayor, I stand opposed.
Mayor, for a point of clarity, could they say who did the motion and the second?
Ross Kimble and Wood seconded the motion.
So Shannon, if you don't mind, so we can keep this orderly, do you mind just calling everybody's name out, and then they can respond after their name? That way they're not talking over each other.
Yes, sir, that'd be perfectly fine. Do you like me to do that now?
Yes, please.
Councilman Dunn?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Lee?
Opposed for their mouth, that's the reason.
Councilman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Scott?
I'm opposed.
Okay, Councilman Barber?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilman Rabel?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to two, or four to two, five to two.
Okay, alright. Alright, thank you, Gary, and thank you, gentlemen. We will now move on to the next business item, which is 2020 Meeting Schedule Discussion. Mike, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I placed this on the agenda tonight. We knew that the Governor was going to be speaking today, and we were trying to make a determination if our regularly scheduled May meeting on the 5th would be able to be profitable at all. Today, he came out, and the Governor did extend the stay-at-home order until May 8th, after our meeting on the 5th. We do have at this time, three different organizations that have asked for quasi-judicial hearings, three or another. So we can either adjust the schedule, the meeting schedule in its entirety, to move the meeting back, maybe perhaps to the 19th, to see if maybe we could have a more regular meeting at that time. We can leave it as it is, and we can just not have quasi-judicial hearings, and put those off until June. Those are really the choices we have, and I would be glad to answer any questions if I may have them.
Okay. Yeah, so I think today, the Governor said the stay-at-home order would last until the 8th. Is that right now, as it is currently? Could extend it further, but until the 8th, I believe, is that correct, Mike?
That is correct, sir.
Is that what you said, okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from the council?
Mayor, I feel like we would be much more productive in the normal setting if it's all possible. I understand the limitations on people, the telephone thing, and we don't have the presentations and stuff. The face-to-face discussion is very important, especially during this budget time. I feel like that we need to write a letter to the Governor and ask him to please allow the community to make the decision. But I know that's not on the agenda, but I just feel like we need to do something so we can be face-to-face and discuss this with the department heads and the manager.
Right, okay. David, Barbara, I think I heard you, did you have something to add?
Yeah, my question was, is there any, I know you mentioned those items, is there any, if the meeting is moved to May the 19th in hopes that we can all meet face-to-face, you know, with the new requirements in place that the Governor is putting, is there anything that would be detrimental to any projects that are planning if it waits until the 19th?
The answer to that question, Councilman Barber, would be no. We believe anything can wait until the 19th. And worst-case scenario, we also believe it could wait until the June meeting on June 2nd as well, if we need to wait that long.
This is Councilman, this is David Stevens. I'm gonna ask a stupid question. Is there any way we could have our meeting, like, say, at the Johnston Community College, and kind of go in one way, six feet apart and all that, and come out the other way? As big as it is?
We could have some of our meetings in that way, Councilman, however, we're still limited to 10 people in the room, and that won't work for a quasi-judicial hearing.
Yeah, I'm not thinking about the 10. I forgot, you know. In theory, it was good.
Yeah, it was, David. This is, yeah, this is Roger. I would like to see us try to postpone it to the 19th, if at all possible. Maybe we can all meet together. That's what I would like to see.
Okay.
One other question, Mayor, is there any way, have there been any consideration of doing something like a Zoom meeting versus the phone conference? I mean, because, you know, I know a lot of us do these meetings all day long, and this is by far the most awkward method to use for communications, given the technology we have today.
Yeah, we did discuss that as far as tonight's meeting, David. But in fact, I was just on a WebEx last night with Triangle J meeting, and so we had 30 or 40 council members and mayors and commissioners from all, you know, all over our region on the call last night. But as Mike and I discussed it, normally in a budget session, we're just looking at our books in general. And I know we had these other two topics besides just the budget. But normally in our budget work sessions, most of us have our binders, and we're just, we're actually just looking at the binders and not really any presentation. So we elected just to go with the call this evening. That's, and that's, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but that's really the only reason we kind of chose to go this way this time. But I'm, it's certainly, you know, if we need to continue to do this in the future, something that we could look at.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
But David, you're, I'm sorry, David, your point is well-taken. Yeah, so go ahead, Travis.
Is there a reason that, I must have missed it, the 19th? Why did we have to go out to the 19th? I have a, I have a conflict that day, but, I mean, whatever, we can work out.
I'll let Mike address that, because I think that was just a proposal from him, as far as I know. Or did we send out? I don't know, Mike, you can answer that one.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. May 19th was just two weeks, it was in the middle of the month from our regular meeting. There's nothing significant about that date, other than it remains a Tuesday for most people who like to go to meetings on Tuesdays and are used to going to them. And we felt it would probably be after the stay-at-home order was lifted. So we were somewhat guessing on what the Governor was going to do, and settled on that date. But there's certainly no significance to it other than that.
Thank you, Mike. Just for the record, the 8th or 20th would work better for my personal schedule, but I'm willing to work with everybody. I'm okay with the 8th.
So can I ask a question? Could you go to the 21st, Travis, or is that also a conflict?
Yes, the 21st would be fine.
So my, can we move it now? Also gives us another few days in case of the stay-at-home or whatever adjustment. So could we move it to the 21st? Can anybody do the 21st for that week? I'm just saying.
Yeah, so I cannot do the 21st. I can do the 18th or the 20th, but I cannot do the 21st.
I also plan to be out of town on the 21st.
Okay, can we do the 18th? I'd love to start from Wednesday night church, if we can.
Yeah, the 18th will be fine with me, if that's, if we're, you know, if we're settled on a date, that's fine by me.
Travis, did you say 18th would work?
Yes, the 18th is fine.
Okay, so David Stevens, 18th, does that work for you?
Works for me.
David Barber, you said you can do the 18th?
Yes, I can.
Okay, John?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Steve?
Yes, sir, can do.
Alright. Mike, is 18th good with you?
Yes, sir, I didn't hear Councilman Lee, though.
Oh, Marlin, 18th, sorry.
It's whatever, it's whatever. No, I'm not, I'm not in existence, it's alright.
Nah, didn't mean that at all, sir. Are you good on the 18th, Marlin? Yeah, let's do it, keep it at seven.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll need an actual vote to amend the current schedule, to change it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we make the amendment to meet on, should I say, May the 5th, to meet on May the 18th at 17:00 p.m.
Second?
Okay. Got a motion and a second to move it to our meeting in May to May the 18th at 7:00. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Who was there opposed?
I think it just came in late.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought I heard someone opposed. Motion carries, we will move the meeting to the 18th at 7:00 o'clock, May 18th.
And we're planning to have this, at this point in time, in person, Mike?
That is correct. That's the reason why we're doing it. Now, that could change based off of, you know, we'll just have to see where things go.
Right.
But as of right now, based off of the phases that the Governor was mentioning today, and if the data continues to improve, then, you know, I think we'll be able to meet in person. Okay. Alright, we'll move on now to the budget. Mike, I will turn it over to you for the presentation of the budget, and then we'll move on into, I guess, utilities afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For, just a refresher for the council, as well as for the community listening in, I want to give a brief overview of budget practices and government budgeting. The town has two enterprise funds, an electric fund and a water and sewer fund. Each of these funds are supported by fees derived from these services being provided to customers. Enterprise funds are intended to be operated as a business, and that the fee should pay for the services provided. However, we continue to strive to attain and maintain a cost-to-service balance as opposed to a desire to operate at a profit margin. Enterprise funds should be able to pay for the services being provided, as well as future capital costs and the maintenance of equipment and the grounds. By definition, the general fund includes everything that's not included in another fund. So the general fund is primarily funded by tax dollars. That includes property taxes, sales taxes, automobile taxes, and other fees, including those from Parks and Recreation and the Shrack, to name only a couple. Entire list of general fund revenues can be found on page 1 and 2 of your budget document. Services included in the general fund are police, fire, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, the Shrack, the Sari Yard Center, the general mission of the town, and its finances. At this point, the town has a reserve fund balance that is not committed to any future expenses in the amount of about $8.5 million. Budget document that you have in front of you is very status quo, meaning that much of the ongoing expenses remain the same as the previous year. There are no new positions in the budget, though different departments did request additional staff, and we'll go through that as we go through the budget and the departments individually. I would ask that everyone look at page 2 of their budget document. On page 2, in the lower right-hand corner, your final budget number should read $15,656,057. That should make sure everybody is using the same document. Everybody have that number?
Can you repeat that one more time, Mike?
Yes, sir. Page 2, the total revenues for the budget on the lower right-hand side, all the way in the corner, is $15,656,057.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Just making sure we're all on the same page. So, as I said, the budget document that you have is very status quo. It maintains property tax rate at 57 cents, does not increase the property tax rate. In regards to our electricity, we had a 1.2% increase in our wholesale costs on April 1st of last year. That was absorbed by the town, as opposed to being passed on to our customers via our rate stabilization fund. We just witnessed a 1.2% rollback of our electric wholesale rates that was effective April 1st of this year, just earlier this month. This should allow us to keep our rates stable for the upcoming year. We do have UFS completing a refresher of our electric rates and our electric fund to make sure that we understand the health of our electric utility, which we believe is very strong. We do have in this budget increases in water and sewer, consistent with planned increases approved by the council in 2016. This will be the last set of water and sewer rate adjustments that are a result of that 2016 root and rate analysis. The recent UFS study that was also done confirmed these increases and used these increases, though indicated that following these, we should not need any increase for at least the next two years. The increase is equivalent to about 80 cents a month for water for the typical residential utility customer, and about $3.72 a month for sewer customers. That's a total of $4.52 a month per customer for those customers using, residential customers using less than 4,000 gallons of water a month, which is pretty typical. So that is included in what we're going to be discussing tonight in revenues. The general fund was decreased in revenues by $536,000 when compared to what we would have normally anticipated for revenues next year due to the environment that we have right now with COVID-19. The budget also includes state-mandated pension increases. Our pension costs increased from 8.95% for general service workers to 10.15%. And for police, this increased from 9.7% to 10.9%. And those are state-mandated increases. Our health insurance rates have also increased, however, they've been minimal compared to many of our neighbors. The town staff sought two plans from our insurance provider, Cigna. The first plan is a status quo plan, which is exactly what the benefit package that employees have today, which resulted in a 6.1% increase over current cost. The second plan decreases deductibles for employees, which staff felt was important during this particular time. This added an additional increase of 3.95% to our healthcare costs. The enhanced insurance plan is what is included in your draft budget. We can pull 3.95% of those costs back out if the council wants to remain status quo, or we can leave it in there to provide the employees with a little better benefit in the way of deductibles. The employee contribution rates remain unchanged. There are no salary increases for employees in any of the line items. However, on the contingency page of each fund, there's a 2.5% lump sum there for the council to use if it's, as it sees fit for salary increases or other items. The agenda for going through the budget will be to start with enterprise funds first. We will start with electricity, which begins on page 46. So if everyone could go to page 46 of your budget, you will see electric fund on the left-hand top corner, and it will be a page that shows your electric fund revenues. Electric sales is the primary revenue source, followed by penalties. You can see our sales is estimated at $16,300,000, and our penalties are $138,500. Now, today, for our current budget, we're anticipating that penalties line item to be considerably down, because we're not charging any penalties, and we haven't been for about a month. So we are going to see a decrease in this current budget. Now, by July, we anticipate that we will be back to more normal operations with electric sales, electric cutoffs, and that will most likely remain the same. However, this budget does remove $25,000 in sales and penalties from what would normally be budgeted for a cushion. If you go to page 47, you will see your electric fund expense line. On the top, you see salary and wages as your first line. This is the only department that is not totally status quo in this line, in this budget. In this, last year, we had a crew leader in the electric department who put in for retirement and was going to retire in early July. Due to that, we did not adjust his pay with everyone else due to our salary study and the other adjustments. He elected not to retire in July, therefore not being included with all the other employees. So we have in here money to bring him back to the same pay as the other crew leader position. And this crew leader is a senior crew leader, obviously, since he was looking at retirement. And he is now elected to stay for about two more years. So that is the only change in the salary line in any department in the budget. Also, in this budget, things that are not included that our director Ted Cradle asked for, he asked for a bucket truck at a cost of $150,000. And what we included in here was half of the cost of that, with half of it being next year. So there's only $75,000 in there for that. There's all, he also asked for $400,000 for a generator to offset some electric billings for the water plant, and that was not included in the budget. He also has one, he asked for one new crew leader position, and it costed just over $66,000. And one new line technician, electric line technician, at a cost of about $56,300, and that is also not included in this budget. Ted Cradle, are you here?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we're prepared to have Director Cradle go through the line items unless there are any questions about anything I have stated at this point. are any questions about anything I have stated at this point.
Okay. Any questions for Mike at this time?
Can you repeat, Mike, if you don't mind, the crew leader and line leader salaries as what you're referencing?
Yes, sir. The crew leader position that's not included was exactly sixty-six thousand and twenty-five dollars, and that is including pay and benefits for that position for a new hired crew leader. The line, utility line technician cost is fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, and that also includes all benefits and, and salaries for starting position.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ted, do you want to start?
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, thank you and good evening. As we go through the line, we start on page forty-seven, and as the manager's already said, everything pretty much is status quo, all the way, except for the salaries and wages line item, he's already explained that. But as you, as you go down that list, it is, it matches last year's request. We do not have any increases on page forty-seven. I can go line by line, but it's, it's been self-explanatory for years. Let me go ahead and skip the, the overtime and the, the insurance and et cetera, et cetera, things I cannot control that are just part of what they are. The first budget real line item that I could control was training and education, which is halfway down the page, line item zero, eight-hundred. Again, this matches last year's request. You know, I'm a big believer in training and getting the guys trained up. So this sends not only our superintendent to training, it sends some of the guys there to get some APPA training. It also pays for our Electric City's lineman course. We have a couple of younger linemen who are still going through it, learning their works because they don't have, you know, only two or three years' experience. So I'm a big believer in that. Obviously, the telephone line's the same, postage is the same, everything's identical on this page. Equipment and maintenance repair is identical. That's the bottom seventeen-hundred line item, kind of at the bottom of the page, also identical. No increases whatsoever.
Ted, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My question is, I know earlier in the year, we had an issue with some OSHA issues about some training that we had to deal with.
Yes, sir.
And the question is, does this budget include any necessarily additional OSHA training that we might need to make sure that we don't find ourselves in that situation again?
I understand what you're asking for, sir. OSHA was related to the water and sewer.
Okay, I'm sorry.
However, I can still address it. Everything that is appropriate to OSHA is currently in the safety program, and the electric department wasn't, you know, there were no issues whatsoever, but it is in there. We do monthly safety meetings to comply with the League of Municipalities as well as OSHA.
So when you get to the, so the, the, the issue was under the, I can't remember which one it was in, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we got it.
It comes back to my mind exactly what the issue was now, so I know why, where it was.
Yes, sir.
So I just said, I'll make sure that we have, I'll make sure that we are doing as much training as we can, especially when it comes to safety, not only for their sake, but for the town's sake. So, you know, I, I agree with you that training is one of the most important things you can do to ensure the safety of individuals, but also to prepare your people, because your people are one of the biggest assets that you have. So the question is, is this enough training?
I believe it is. We, our safety record, and if anybody would like to come see it, we got safety awards in electric department for, I think nineteen of the last twenty-one years, where we lost zero man-hours whatsoever. The two, I think someone got injured with their elbow, and we lost a day for an injury. So we, we're really proud of our electric safety record here, and we got a wall full of plaques. If anybody ever wants to stop by, I'll be happy to show them to you. We also got the APP Safety Excellence Award this year, and I know that, that was a couple of months ago, we highlighted that at one of our council meetings.
Yeah, I was, I was referring to safety training, I was just, I meant training as a whole, you know, is there, is there some, I said, training is, I don't talk about specifically safety training, I'm saying, is there an additional training that you would like to have seen that we did not, that you did not include the budget because of budgetary restrictions? Is there some training that would have been, that really would be beneficial that we did not include? That's what I'm trying to get at, that, not trying to say we need it more for safety, but you see my point?
Yes, sir, I do. I, I understand what you're saying. I think we're, we're fairly comprehensive with this in our budgetary number. It, it hits not only safety, but we do talk about, like, the career lineman development, which is a big course, every lineman goes through it for pretty much six to eight years before they can be called a journeyman lineman. And that is, that is included in this, and that's comprehensive as far as materials, how to do your job safely and effectively, the more efficient way to do things, that kind of thing. It covers, it's fairly comprehensive.
What, what is the infrared camera training?
Yeah, well, we use an infrared camera to look for hot spots. So it takes, you know, just as it says, it takes an infrared picture, and you can see which transformers or which pieces of equipment are hot, and that usually leads to defection. So you have to replace that, you don't want to, because that was, for example, we might get an explosion similar to the one we had last winter. So we have training on how to use that camera. We have a couple of new guys who started within the last year. That, that training is only offered once a year, and we take advantage of it every year, because we don't, it's a piece of equipment we don't use that often. And even the guys who've been here, it's obvious a refresher training for them as well. So it helps us, you know, prevent accidents.
One other question related to training, so I know there's a lot of work being done on use of drones. I know the town of Smithville owns several drones. Are you, are you looking at doing any training to, so your, your line workers can take advantage of, we're talking about safety and everything else, the use of drones can save, you know, definitely, they're easier to use, but also safer. And they have infrared cameras on those too, so I didn't know if that was something that, you know, you have planned. I know there's been some training for some people in Smithville already on drones, getting them certified so they can legally fly. I didn't know if you had any plans for that in the electrical department.
Well, within the electrical department, I don't have an operator who's a pilot, but I do want to use, I would like to use the, I think the fire department's got a couple, and I know a couple other employees around town, or for the town are licensed. And I would primarily use that in the aftermath of a storm, looking for damage, so, you know, wouldn't have to endanger any human, you know, maybe going down an outfall or not. There is a, we haven't been able to enact that yet, no training's been done, but I did want to get up with the fire department in the summer for just such purpose.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anything else, Ted?
Well, yeah, if that's good enough for page one, we'll go on to page forty-eight.
Ted, I do have a question on the legal fees. I know we didn't have it in eighteen, and in nineteen, you had four hundred dollars, and now you put five thousand in the budget for legal fees. Can you explain why we need five thousand for legal fees?
Last year, it was five thousand as well, and we didn't use a single dime. So we, it's a budgetary number, should we ever get into a situation that we need them?
Okay. You actually used five thousand, or I see, mine said you used the four-twenty-six, so I don't know.
I'm sorry, I think it's FY twenty adopted was five thousand. I don't know, I think maybe the projected might be off, I don't know that we used, um, I don't know that we used it all out of electrical, or not, I don't believe we used any, to be honest.
I just wondered if that was something that we needed to keep in there or not. That might be a question for Mike, though, I guess.
Yeah, this is Mike. We try to keep legal fees in, in each department, so that if something comes up that Bob has to work on, or we do enable some type of lawsuit that we don't foresee, or work comp claim, that we do have some fees there rather than adjusting the budget from a zero balance. So that, that's why that money is there. It's not often used, but just like this year with the OSHA stuff in water and sewer, we were glad to have the money there.
I completely understand, thank you. That's all I had.
So, so Mike, just for clarification on the budget package itself, so we don't have an actual number of what's spent to date, is that correct, or?
That, that's correct, we don't. These are, the FY twenty projected line is just projections that the department had submitted, thinking that we may be spending that line, but you don't have anything where we are now, although I can say that we do not feel, prior to COVID-19 anyway, we were not over-budgeting any of our lines.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. And so, yeah, so Steve, just to Steve's point, you know, it, when you're just looking at this, it looks like that, that four-twenty-six, this is just an example, right, is what has been spent year-to-date, but that's, that is actually not the column for what's been spent year-to-date. That's twenty, that was what was spent in twenty nineteen. Right?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Twenty nineteen budget.
Dollars was spent in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm just trying to make that clarification for everything, because it is, I mean, it is kind of a bit confusing there, so, okay. All right, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we have five thousand, then put another five thousand, end up with ten thousand in the same account if we didn't, I mean, if we use it, then that's fine, but I just didn't want to keep adding on.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a fair point, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ted, Ted.
Sir.
See the question, but we, we estimated seventy-five, not, seventy-five, forty in line item eleven-hundred for telephone, this year twelve-four. Is that because of services that just went up?
Twelve-four reflects the same thing it was this year. Again, it's not, there, there's no change from last year to this year.
Oh, and you're right, Andy, I mean, Mayor, you just said the same thing, that's what we spent last year, I'm sorry. Never mind. You're right, I got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, we don't know what we spent this year, right? Last year...
Well, yeah, it's a projected, we only have what we've spent to date.
Right, well, that's the same question as basically Andy was just explaining, and I'm sorry, I was, I apologize for wasting your time on that, thank you.
Well, no, no problem, no problem there, but I may just go ahead, but I think we'll probably continue to get these questions, Mike. So for our next meeting, understandably, it's just a snap, a snapshot in time, but can we, can we get those numbers of what we spent year-to-date for each line item? Is that a possibility?
That's what we're seeing now as the actual, and it throws us off as far as what we're, what we spent and all that, we're seeing the actual, and that's what we're basing off for next year, so. We do need to get a year-to-date total for each, each line item, if we can.
Mr. Mayor, I can certainly provide that and email that to council tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mike. All right, Ted, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so we'll move on to page forty-eight. And again, you'll see on the entire page, I believe, everything is status quo from this year to last year with two exceptions, well, actually, there's three, three items to talk about. The first item is supplies and operations. Although the number is, a hundred and eighty-five thousand is the same as last year, we've added an additional line item right below that, which are supplies that are earmarked just for the East River development. If you guys will recall, I came half, back in January, I believe, and because this line item was running low due to some growth around town and asked for some contingency funds, and I said it, we would address that for next year in the coming budget, and this is exactly that address. So we're adding money, it's actually more supplies, but it's just earmarked for East River. The one-thirty number is pretty much what it was for phase one, it was a hundred and twenty, I think, seven thousand. So it's a hundred and thirty on phase two, or whatever phases may come. Everything else is status quo. If you look at service contracts, that went up ten thousand dollars from two thirteen to two twenty-three, and the reason, I believe, is highlighted in red, the cost of trimming trees has gone up as plume went on, up on their prices per square foot. So using the same square footage and then backing into the calculation, we went up ten thousand. The third item on this page that is different is the electricity purchased, and that is wonderfully going down. Last year's budget of twelve-seven-five, and this year's budget of twelve-sixty-four, so that's a hundred and ten thousand dollar reduction. And that, of course, reflects the 1.2% wholesale drop that we're going to see throughout the next year. So before I move off page forty-eight, does anyone have any questions on these line items?
I do have some questions, Mayor. This is Travis.
Go ahead, Travis.
Okay. Ted, I, I wanted to ask you this early, but out of trying to respect and not be interrupted. The, the debt payoff for the, well, I can come back to that question, we can talk about it in a minute. Have we seen a return on investment on our smart meters? I see we're still budgeting contract services to read meters, but we're supposed to be able to read them via remotely now. And can you give us any feedback on that?
Yeah, we are getting, the residential meters, which is what we've replaced a hundred percent of them, and that is actually working exactly as we wanted it to. It's doing everything that we originally intended it to do. We probably could use, what we're waiting, and you'll, we'll get to this in the capital projects, we need to put the same kind of meters for commercial and industrial clients. They're more costly meters because they read demand, so they have to be programmed individually. A residential meter, similar to any other, almost any other appliance in your home, can merely be unplugged and replugged with minimal programming. The demand meters have to have a more complex program, because they'll read demand and then download that and, you know, based on when the demand is. So there's a little more complex job, and they're more expensive, and we'll be starting that as soon as, in fact, we've already placed the order, we placed the order back in February, and they're due to arrive here in May. And we'll start that, the installation of those meters when they come. So that'll, that'll hopefully carry through the next year. As far as directly to the question of the meter readers and the service of grid one, any given billing book is a mixture of residential and commercial, mostly. There may be one or two that are purely one or the other, but there, we have thirty-six different billing books, and I'm sure there is commercial and residential throughout. We'll start on book one, and as we replace the entire commercial in book one, we will drop them from the service. So as the year goes on, the, even though we're budgeted for the full year, we should see a decline in this coming fiscal year in our actual bill from grid one. And I hope that addressed the question you were getting towards.
Well, we had this conversation about two years ago when we started this, and we were told that you would save a significant amount of money on the smart meters. Do we need to negotiate that contract?
You mean the cost of the smart meters, sir?
The cost for the meter readers.
Yeah, it seems like we're, we're still paying for ten thousand meters to be read each month.
Yeah, that's just, Matt, well, you're, you're right in the sense that that, that will come down. It's taken this long, just based on the amount of time it took to get the meters and get them installed. But it should, it should come down this coming year. We'll go, we should go from ten thousand, I don't know the exact number, but they'll come down as we get the commercial meters put in, because we will no longer use them as a service. So they're paid a dollar thirty-seven per meter, so instead of ten thousand, in a few months, we'll be reading, you know, eight thousand or nine thousand, it'll be, it'll be less, and that entire budget number will come down.
Well, could you please look at that for us to make sure that we're getting our money's worth out of that company? I don't think we've negotiated that contract in several years. And I know they still have to go to the houses and read the water meter, but, you know, that was one of the, the selling points for spending that significant amount of money for that smart system, was that we would save this money.
Yes, sir.
The other question I have, Mr. Credo. Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Travis, just on that point, I'm sorry for interruption, but Ted, when, when was the last meter installed?
Residential?
I mean, yeah, residential, it doesn't have to be exact, but...
Uh, over the winter. Probably early winter, maybe November-ish.
All right, so end of twenty nineteen, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, thanks. Go ahead, Travis, sorry.
Um, Mr. Credo, we had discussed several times during these budget sessions and council meetings...
Um, Mr. Credo, um, we had discussed several times during these budget sessions and council meetings about implementing the, um, load management and improving our system that's a one-read system and go into a more diverse. Um, have we got anywhere with that project? Because this will save money for the citizens and for the town.
We have, we have not, um, currently, but we are, I am working with Electric Cities to move in that direction. But it just hasn't gone fast enough.
Well, I agree.
We are moving in that direction, ask the question.
Okay. Um, I have one other question, Mayor, but I think it's more related to the summary, um, and I don't want to delay the meeting. So let's carry on, thank you, Mr. Credo.
Yes, sir.
So Ted, just on that, though, I know, I mean, I know we're talking budget, but this is part of the budget, right? So this is something that we've discussed many times. So what, you said, you said the conversation with Electric Cities hasn't just gone as planned or as quickly. What, what's, can you give a little more specifics on that? I mean, what's been, what is the holdup? Have we been having discussions or we just haven't really gotten around to having discussions? Or what exactly is our, what's the matter?
The nature of discussions have been fairly loose, we haven't really nailed down any, any one particular. It seems every time there's a, um, a desire to reach, you know, this, use this particular technology and/or this particular vendor to go further, then there's an improvement and here's a better system. And it's been a, um, maybe a lack of commitment either on my part or their part to make it happen. And because it's a, don't want to commit one and then have a, you know, then two months later, you get new and improved and dag gum, I should have gone that way. Or they, their recommendation to me is, well, here's something even better. And for a small fee, you can upgrade to that, and I'd rather not pay those fees. Uh, so we're looking for a system that'll, that'll meet our needs and still be reflective of the savings that we can get.
Okay. So Travis, I hate to put you on the spot, you don't have to answer this now, but would you be willing to work with Ted? Maybe serve on a small committee to look at this?
Yes, I would, Mayor, as I've discussed in the past. I think this is a significant opportunity for us to save money for the citizens because any load shedding that we do ultimately reflects in their bill, and it also helps on the peak demand for the town. And, um, I know Mr. Credo's been busy, and I understand what he's saying about there's many systems out there. But, Mr. Credo, one of my concerns with this is that these new housing developments that are being built, when they're installing these things, for example, the smart thermostat with the load shedding of the HVAC and all this new technology, those customers could be significantly saving and they could be putting it in, uh, the builder could be putting it in if we had a rate structure that would allow that, much like our neighboring community Apex. But, uh, yes, we certainly can have more discussion on that, but it's a huge opportunity and I understand the complexity of it, I certainly do, but I think it's something we need to make a priority.
So, so Mike, I will ask that you may include this on your reports as far as updates on this. And then, um, Ted, and do you think coming back on or before our August, um, 2020 meeting is a reasonable time just to come back with a, with at least some options? Like give us four months?
Absolutely.
And that's a, that's a on or before, right? But does that sound reasonable to everybody?
What date did you say, Mayor?
August meeting, on or before our August meeting?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, um, sorry, but I just thought we kind of put that one to bed. All right, go ahead, go ahead, Ted.
I was just, is there any other-
Travis, did you have other questions, I'm sorry?
Uh, uh, no, I was going to ask him about our debt service, and that's probably something we need to talk with Greg about, the payoff of the recent sellout of the power plants, because I know Smithfield's in a significant place. We're almost ready to unload that debt, and, um, I was just curious of where we stood on that. We should be within about three years, I think.
Yeah, Councilman Scott, I don't have that information right in front of me, but I can send you that information following the meeting on exactly where we're at with that.
Okay, well, last, uh, budget discussion we had, and again, this is about saving money for our community. We had agreed to put that in our budget as a line item, so we would see that. I don't guess we were able to do that. But, yeah, I would love for you to send that information to me and to the council.
Yeah, I'll get that out. I know that we have very little control over that. Um, it's all done at the Electric Cities level, and we, we are unable to pay ahead or do anything with that, so. We're still-
Well, I know, Mr. Scott, I understand, but my point with wanting us to be aware of that is once we're free of that debt, it changes things a bit in our electrical program, which means could be potentially more savings going back to our commercial and residential customers alike. But we're already pretty much narrow. I know UFS has worked really hard to keep us, um, as you mentioned earlier, for the enterprise fund, making sure that we are operating it healthy, but we're not overcharging. And I know we've done significantly well on that. I'd just like to keep our tabs on those numbers and see where we're at. I know Mr. Siler has the data, and I think he tracks it regularly, because he and I have talked about it before. But I just wanted to bring it up during this discussion with the budget, so everybody's got it on their mind.
Yeah, I actually-
But that's all, thank you.
Yeah, I actually have some of the information here. The defeasance debt will be paid off in year 2026. Um, so that's our timeline. And we should be-
Okay, so five hours out.
Um, paying about 400 million a year right now of all Electric Cities contributions.
Yeah, okay. And that may be very confusing to, um, but that was just the, uh, the agreement that we went into with all the other towns in the Eastern Agency. Um, but that was a debt that Smithfield was responsible for. And I know it's not 400 million, I think you're saying total, right?
Yeah, that's the total annual bill for all of them.
Yeah, it was very, yeah, it was, uh, okay, thank, thank you.
Councilman Scott, the defeasance debt on rider number eight of our monthly bill for the town of Smithfield is just over $96,000 a month.
96K a month?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, it'll be paid off in about five years, so.
Yes, sir. Just as the manager indicated, 2026.
Okay. All right, that, that helps me a lot, thank you.
Yes, sir. Are there any other questions on page 48, gentlemen, before I move on? Okay, hearing none, I'll go to page 49, which is only a couple of line items, I believe. Um, the first is the, what the manager had mentioned, half of the bucket truck. Now, although it's listed as a bucket truck, it's really a small service truck, because the large bucket truck, we just bought one, I think, this, last year, uh, that's significantly larger. This is a small service truck for, say, they come in on the weekends and it's a small, a service outage, and they don't want to have to drive the big bucket truck around town. That's what this one's all about. Uh, so of course, that's half of that for this year, and we'll get the other half next year at $75,000. Uh, the capital outlay, as you can see, is a decrease. Um, and the only thing I'm asking for is the, uh, a pickup truck for our meter technician who goes around town. Uh, the current truck is, um, it's old, it's 2006, I believe. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, as I was describing today, it, every time we make a turn, the knuckle in the chassis is worn, just about worn out, according to our mechanic here in town. And, uh, anyway, it's, it's old and it's got a lot of mileage, so I was looking for $40,000 to get him a new pickup truck.
Ted, could we use the savings from the electric that we're, that we're not buying, 90,000, and just scratch out your utility truck? Could we sort it in a budget?
It does balance that way, that's, that's how that line item works, or that's how the overall budget works.
Okay. So Ted, I'm sorry, I did, you may have said this, but back on, um, the previous page 48. What was the CS, what was the CS Tyler, line item 4502? Can you tell me what that was again?
I believe we have a quarterly payment for the Tyler software, for the billing software.
Gotcha.
This is electrics portion thereof. That, that's correct, Mr. Mayor, that is our Tyler software that we installed here about two years ago. And that is our ongoing cost for that, for electric.
Okay, so just out of curiosity, well, not out of curiosity, so we budgeted 29140, but we've got our projected at 44,000. I know we're not showing what we spent to date, but we're saying we're going to spend 44, our projected's 44. Is that a typo?
I'll have to look at that and figure out why that number is there. Um, I'll have to ask our finance director if there was some additional expense this year that we weren't planning on for that software upgrade.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other questions, gentlemen, for Ted? Okay.
Okay.
Not hearing any, Mike? Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, if it's-
Mayor, I was asking a question, I'm sorry, my phone was muted.
No problem, go ahead.
On page 49, the, uh, we have, uh, 40,000 allocated for a work truck for a meter reader. I thought we had a contract where they read meters, I don't understand.
This is actually our meter technician, uh, we have one in town, he goes around and does, uh, pulls and replaces and repairs on the existing meters. He's not just a reader, he's actually, that's a misnomer. It's, it's, it's a new pickup truck for him. And we've had that position for a number of years.
It must be forward-driven and all that for 40,000. I know the dog-
Well, I, I hope not to use it all, obviously.
I know the, I know the, we just got the, uh, truck for the police department for the animal control, and it's like 20 something thousand for the Dodge, so I just wanted, it must be fixed all up and forward-driven and all that for 40 grand.
No. Mm-mm. We will certainly be monitoring that, uh, cost and bring that in front of council for approval before it's purchased.
Thank you. Steve, it looks like we just reduced his budget by 20 grand. Just kidding with you right now, Ted. Well, I don't know, 40,000 for pickup just sounds high to me, I'm sorry.
No, and it may be, I mean, I, it's fine. I mean, I, again, I agree with the manager, we'll, we'll ask for what we can get is, you know, I don't want the El Chepo that we have to push up the hill, but I don't, he doesn't need a luxury van either, so. We'll get him a sensible work truck and we'll take it before council, and you gentlemen can approve it or not approve it at that time.
Yeah, well, I, I, I may stand corrected, but I believe the, uh, animal control truck was in the high twenties, maybe 26, 28 for the Dodge, and I think they've had good service out of it, so I just thought 40 might be a little high, but, you know, if it's forward-driven and all, you know, it might be 40, I don't know. Okay, any other questions for Ted on electric?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also go to page 50 in electric before we wrap up.
Yes, sir.
Page 50 includes our debt service, um, for our electric utility fund. We have the one loan out, that is all we have out in electric. A substation loan that came out in 2007. Um, we are budgeted at 342,586 dollars for that payment this year, and that matures in fiscal year 2027. Uh, we also have our contingency dollars here, um, which we have at this point, um, 305,814 dollars listed for contingency, unanticipated expenses. And there you will also see the $31,000 that could be used for that salary adjustment I talked about earlier. With that, I would ask that we move to page 38 of your budget. I'll give everybody a minute here. Page 38 has the revenues for the water and sewer system, including the water plant. Water sales and sewer sales are the primary revenue source, including wholesale bulk water sales, which are sales made to Johnston County for their use. The debt, the draft budget reflects about $100,000 in decreased revenues when compared to what would have been projected for next year due to the COVID-19 issues that we're having. As stated earlier, these revenue totals include the planned water and sewer increases from the 2016 Wooton study and supported by the UFS study. Water rate increases include a similar increase in bulk water sales, and this increase has already been noticed to the county, so the increase can be placed into effect on or near July 1st. Again, this will increase the water bill for the average residential customer about 80 cents a month and about $3.72 a month for sewer. If you would, go ahead and go to the next page, 39. I'll again ask Ted to go through these expense lines with you for the water plant. But before that, I'll add that he also requested in this budget, which is not included, one, um, position for a water plant operator, two, a cost of salary and benefits of $50,340. That's $50,340 in that position is not included in the draft budget. Any questions on any of that? Hearing none, Ted, you want to go ahead and go through the water plant? Yes, sir. So on page 39, starting with the salaries and wages, uh, you'll see a slight increase that is presumed that there will be a career ladder movement amongst a couple of operator, or at least one operator this year. I believe there's two that'll be, could be eligible, but we're fairly confident at least one. Again, the rest of it, as you go down, is, is either, uh, overtime is, it's an exact request from last year. We did go over this year. This fiscal year, we had at least one of my operators had his relatively serious medical condition. He spent some time out. Um, so we won't likely reach our projected number with straight time because we didn't pay him, but we paid other people in overtime to make up for it. Um, again, not, not able to change the FICO or any of the insurance. Uh, we again start, kind of pick it up at the 0800 line at training and education. It's the same number as last year. My only comment to that is I believe the comments section was incorrectly copied over. Uh, what that covers, it is from the telephone one below it. Um, the current, the comments are all about, uh, the permits we have to have, um, that's where we get it from, the training that we send the operators to, the schools they go to. Um, because all the operators have to have certification, at least six hours through the state annually. So they all have to go to various seminars or schoolings to get to. Uh, the rest of the page, you can see it's, it's fairly, it's 0% increases, except utilities at 1,300. There was a 4% because we believe since we'll be producing more water in the coming year, we'll be using more pump energy as well as more sludge, you know, on the sludge pumps, as well as just the finish pump and the, uh, the process pumps. Uh, so we bumped up in anticipation of producing more water. Uh, down at line 2,900, professional services, you'll notice a $10,000 reduction. Uh, we had a new SCADA, uh, service company come in last year, and they, we bought essentially a lot of new items that we do not anticipate buying again because they're new already. So a lot of that $10,000 reduction is in the fact that a lot of the stuff is new. Um, that was just for their expertise as problems arise. It's also a budgetary number we hope not to meet. Um, so that concludes page 39. If anyone has any questions on page 39, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Credo, are all of our water plant operators certified and being paid accordingly?
They are all certified and are drawing wages, if you mean accordingly, I'll have to ask you...
For example, uh, in other words, like a tier program so they can promote up?
Yes, they are, sir. We did have a trainee last year, but he did receive certification during the year.
Okay.
Well, hearing nothing more on page thirty-nine, if you gentlemen would like to flip the page to page forty. What we have here are, uh, supplies and operations, a uniform service contract, everything is identical to this year, there were no increases. We did verify that the chemicals, uh, the purchase for bulk chemicals will stay the same. Um, that's actually surprising, being that two or three of our chemicals come from Asia. Um, but anyway, uh, and it's not just ours, I believe there's one chemical that you can only get from China. So, uh, regardless, uh, the prices appear to be the same and our suppliers have said they would be the same. So the only increase is, uh, the only adjustment, if you look at page ninety-one oh-one, there's additional funds going to the water plant fund.
Ted, if I could talk out back for just a second?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is a, as everyone is aware, the council, um, originally voted last year to move forward with the water plant expansion. Um, that's been somewhat put on hold. Uh, just recently, we have received, um, approval from the Corps of Engineers on our engineering plans. Um, so we will have to make some decisions during this budget process as if you want to take out the twelve million dollar loan that is available to you to expand the water plant or to not expand the water plant. Either way, the water plant does have significant need, um, of replacement of some of the items, the mechanical items within the plant. So this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is to be used for either one replacement of those items that need to be replaced or it could be used as part of the debt service payment that would be made should we take out that loan, uh, to expand the water plant. That's what that money is. You can go ahead, Ted.
Okay. So, Ted, one, one question on supplies and operations.
Yes, sir.
Um, you mentioned, you mentioned the chemicals and only one supplier, or possibly one supplier, uh, of one chemical, maybe in China. So do we have a plan in place where we, we have multiple suppliers in case one, um, you know, does experience some type of issue or whatever, do we, do we have a contingency plan in place for those?
Yeah, there are, there are three or four chemical suppliers that we always use and we're always bidding them to get out to get the, you know, whatever the cheapest load is coming in the next three to four months. Uh, I believe, and it could be off, I believe it's the sodium pernanginate, one of these items uh, is only manufactured in China. So all four suppliers throughout the United States, whatever it is, they always get it from China. Now, what they're doing is they're looking for other sources around the world. Um, but we have four different, and all four of, uh, to, to date have stated that it's, they're, they do not anticipate supply line issues. They have back stock or whatever to at least carry us through, uh, at, at least the end of the calendar year. So if, if something does occur, I have plenty of time to notify council and let you guys know what, what's going on.
So is that, is that something that we purchase a year's supply at one time, or does that, does it come in certain, you know, at various shipments throughout the year, a lot?
Yeah, it's various shipments throughout the year because there is a shelf life on some of these chemicals. Some chemicals could obviously be bought, uh, well ahead of time, uh, and then we would need storage tanks, but that's a small price to pay if we're going to run out of it, I agree. But yeah, I think this particular chemical that, that we had that concern with does have a shelf life. So we buy it kind of in a two or three month load at a time.
Okay, alright, and then just, just for clarification, um, my real question is, uh, is that regardless of where it comes from, regardless of the number of suppliers, we have an agreement with one supplier for various chemicals or whatever. You feel like should something happen to those suppliers, any one of those suppliers, that there's either another supplier on, that, that's in the market that we could, that we could quickly switch to for, for our supplies, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I, I believe, I believe it, yes, sir. I believe we'll be able to get something, or even a substitute chemical, something that would work.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Alright, with no further questions on page forty, if you look at page forty-one, uh, these are the capital projects coming for the coming year. Um, there's upgrades to our SCADA, now this SCADA system, what I'm talking about is not the actual water plant, it's the remote sites out at the water tanks. So there'll be some upgrades there. Uh, again, we're, we're replacing some filter media. Uh, we did a media, we have some current year budget to replace some of the media, but there wasn't enough to replace all three of our filters. Um, and then we're, um, rebuilding the raw pump, the settle pump, and the grid pump, that a hundred and three thousand dollars is, uh, uh, I guess a consequence, if you will, things have broken down in, in the last couple of years that would have been replaced during the water plant improvement and expansion project, but we can't, we can't really wait another six months, we got to get these things, uh, fixed now. And of course, the last year again is the work truck, and Mr. Rabel will try and keep it under, uh, hopefully in the high twenties. That particular truck's a two thousand and four model, uh, it, it's roof leaks and, uh, the back window doesn't close, so we have to park it under a lean-to and wrap it in plastic. Also, the ignition on the, uh, steering column, you have to move it, uh, it's temperamental, you have to move it up and down just to get the key in so you can, uh, turn it. It doesn't lock in one place. Um, so it's, it's a little older, it's got a lot of miles on it, it's beat up, and we're trying to replace it. And again, I know that's forty thousand, but I have no intention of spending forty thousand, this is certainly going to be a high, mid to high twenties, if that's what we can do it, you know, that, that's just a budgetary number. So hopefully all these projects come in under budget anyway. But that's what those are about. You guys have any questions on, on anything in the water plant, or page forty-one, or anything?
Mr. Credo, was the, uh, bulk wholesale water rate increase accepted and when will that take effect? On the revenue side?
Uh, the water increase on, uh, I think the manager has already indicated that, that we've notified the, the county already, it could go into effect July one. Uh, and it, it went up, I believe, uh, from two twenty per thousand gallons to two thirty-five, which is the same six point eight percent that we're asking for in the water fees for, uh, in accordance with the Wooton plan that was enacted six years ago by council, or five years ago by council, excuse me.
I, I, Ted, Ted, I guess Travis's ultimate question though was, any feedback from the county? Have we received any feedback from the county? Like positive, negative, or just nothing?
Paul Shander said was, thank you for notifying us.
Okay.
That ultimately reflects the balanced budget because you've got, it looks like you've got about three hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in increased revenue based off that, so that would affect that significantly. That's on page thirty-eight, line item number, number?
Yeah.
Three five, three five, one.
Mr. Mayor, could I comment on that?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
One line on again. Page thirty-eight, the water wholesale, wholesale increase, zero, zero, one.
Yeah.
Zero, zero, one, yeah.
Yeah. Councilman Scott, I have had conversation with the, the county manager on this subject, um, and I don't believe that we are going to see any decrease in water purchases due to the increase that we have provided them. I'm sure they're going to just pass that right on down to their, their, their customer.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. I'm not hearing any other questions, is that? Is that it for the water plant?
It is, Mr. Mayor, we can move on to page forty-two for water sewer. Um, I'll let everybody get there. Uh, again, uh, the only thing not included in the budget requested by, uh, Ted was a one position for a utility line mechanic. And that cost with salary and benefits was forty-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars, forty-five, five, fifteen. And Ted, I'll let you go through your line items.
Thank you. Um, again, we start with wages and we do see a small, and that's an anticipated career ladder adjustment. Uh, we do have some, in this particular department, we had some younger guys get hired. Uh, they've already expressed interest in, uh, going to the schools. Uh, the schools are obviously up in, up in the air, under the current, no one's really sure how they're going to reenact them, but when they do, the fiscal year goes into the spring, so they'll certainly be able to do that. And, uh, if, if they're successful, we'll have budgeted, uh, for their career ladder advancement. Um, everything, um, uh, let's see, uh, overtime, we're, we're tending to get a lot of, uh, weekend and night work, so I've, I've upped the overtime number, which is, uh, the O two fifty for five thousand dollars, just because we, we are seeing a lot more, uh, after-hours work. And I didn't want to, I'd rather have it in the budget and not need it than need it and not have it in the budget. Um, then we go through the, obviously, the insurance, FICO, et cetera, things I can't change. Getting back down to training, um, this is the training line, the seventy-five hundred. Uh, the training program we have, uh, which includes, this is where the problem was with OSHA. It wasn't so much that we didn't have training, uh, the problem with OSHA was we didn't apply the training from day one. Um, and that has been rectified, the last four people that have been hired have started the training per the recommendation of OSHA on day one. Um, so that, that's already been taken care of. Uh, and we do feel that the program's adequate as OSHA has approved it. Um, there's no change on any of the next few line items till we get to the bottom. The equipment and maintenance repair, uh, we went up five thousand there because essentially the cost of degreaser has gone up. Uh, degreaser is what we put into the wet wells, it helps prevent clogging in the town. And I think there's been quite a, a fewer, uh, uh, grease backups, uh, in the town since we've started using it. So we feel it's a well worth investment. Um, so I'll pause there on page forty-two if anyone has any questions regarding that page.
Ted, I was answering the question on mute again, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Um, uh, I know that we use the large pumps when the stations fail, various times, I know there's one on West Smithfield you've been working on. My question is, is do we own those large pumps, or should we buy one as a capital thing so you don't have to rent it?
Understood, we own that one, Travis, that's ours.
Okay, okay, this was curious, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, again, we can go back to line, or page forty-two if anybody wants, but I'll proceed to the next page. Um, page forty-three, uh, again, you see the same request in the first couple line items. I did go up with vehicle supplies and maintenance by five thousand dollars. Uh, as, as our work fleet gets a little older, there's just presumed to be more maintenance. And similar to the overtime, I'd rather have it in the budget and not need it than need it and not have it. Um, on the, on the supplies and operations, uh, we did increase it by ten thousand dollars. And although the, the comments section said tariffs from China have caused the supplies to go up, it's not necessarily the tariffs, it's just, in general, all the supplies, uh, steel and plastic have gone up a little bit and we needed to budget for that. Uh, uniforms is identical, sewage treatment, we went up, um, because we do know that um, the county is going to go up, I don't know the exact number yet, but they haven't not gone up yet. And, uh, based on what we're getting on monthly bills, we know we need to increase that probably about ten percent. Uh, service contracts, we added twenty thousand dollars in, in that, uh, if you look at the very comments section, at the very last line of that comments section, ninety thousand dollars for street cuts, last year we budgeted seventy thousand. And we tend to do a lot of work in the streets and it, I don't know if we're, we'll have to take that, um, we need to go up a little bit to cover that for next year. Um, so that's where the twenty thousand dollar increase, last year it was seventy, this year it's ninety. So that's an exact twenty thousand dollar increase. And then, of course, the economic development is identical as it has been. So anyone have any questions on this page or, or even the previous page?
Any, any further questions for Ted? From this?
Okay, then I'll go on to page forty-four, which is the last page of, of the expense budget before debt service. It really covers, uh, the, pretty much the capital projects. Um, line item ninety-one oh-one, uh, one point one five million, which is actually a hundred thousand dollar decrease from last year. Um, again, these are ongoing projects of I and I reduction, lift station repair and upgrades, because we upgrade the pumps. Uh, there's, uh, water next grid that has to, uh, keep going in. Uh, phase two of the, uh, Derwood Stevenson water line, currently in this budget year, we have money already allocated, but this adds to it. Uh, knowing that we have to bore under the river, we thought there'd be extra costs associated with that. And then we've got to replace the force main along Highway two-ten. This is from that new apartment complex, all the way down, uh, on the south side of two-ten and the south side of Market Street, tying into a county manhole, uh, in front of, let's see, across the street. Um, from, I think it's a little farther down than Whitley's, so I mean, closer to the river. So that, that's what those numbers are. And then the capital outlay, the general things we'll get, our continuation of the same programs for rehabilitation of, uh, aged manholes, water line upgrades throughout town, um, mapping systems, uh, for our asset inventory. And then there's this one specific project we can get done. There's an alleyway behind Wilson and Holding Street that we've repaired, uh, three or four times sewer in the last year. So we're going to go manhole to manhole and replace the entire line. And in doing so, or it's a significant distance, uh, that, we got a, a contracted budgetary number of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. All that number is the line item of three hundred and fifty thousand. So again, if there are any questions on water and sewer or anything at all, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, so Ted, um, help me out, refresh my memory back on page forty-three. Line item, uh, forty-five hundred on sewage treatment?
Yes, sir.
I know you said that you anticipate the county going up roughly about ten percent, but looking back at the fiscal year twenty, I guess that's twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, our overall spend was one point eight.
Yes.
Help me remember why we had such a large increase there.
Uh, the, from the one point eight to the two point seven, that one year was one of the wettest years on record in that winter, if you recall. Uh, anytime we have, uh, any kind of flooding whatsoever, any kind of rainfall, uh, we have seepage in our sewer system, and this is not unique to Smithfield, that's everywhere in the country. Um, it's just, it's not, it's not built watertight, it's built for gravity flow, so it's not pressurized. So you get seepage, uh, and that was one of the wettest winters on record. So, you get seepage, and that was one of the wettest winters on record. This year, it probably won't be quite that high, but also in that, the county started moving their rates up. If you recall, I think we had a 5% rate, and a 6% rate, and a 12% rate, and they've done this two or three times in the last three years. We've seen sewer rates increase. So, that's where it's been climbing, even though we might be doing as good a job, or even a better job, as we've ever done, between Mother Nature and the county increasing their rates, the cost is going up.
Yeah, so that leads me to another question. So, I certainly know about the I and I and understand that, but I would have thought, you know, we've done some repairs on the lines. I know we still have a long ways to go, but we have shown that the repairs that we have made has made a pretty good, you know, it was a good investment, and the outcome has been good, but I kind of... I didn't expect us... I guess I kind of figured that number to come back down some, but with the continued increases by the county, and now they're going up again, is the cost of sewage treatment really going up that high? Say that we... Our amounts of treatment were the exact same. I know that's not ever going to be the case, but let's just say it was. Is the cost to treat that sewage really going up that much? Or are they using this money to bank for a new sewage treatment plant? That's really my question. And then, going to hit us again.
Mr. Mayor, I can't speak to why they charge what they charge, I just know that it will go up. My gut feeling is, you know, they might have chemical increases and energy pump issues and things of the same nature. Supposedly, their capacity fee, and I know that's a subject near and dear to your heart, is supposed to be what's funding this new wastewater plant, but I don't know their economics. I just know that they're probably going to go up in price.
Right. So, leads me to another question. Are we paying, as they tell them, more than what we really should be paying because of increased population throughout the county? And you don't have to answer that right now, but I would like to know what... It's public record, and they've got a budget, so I think we need to understand why it was a 5% increase, why it was a 6% increase, why it was a 12% increase, and now a 10% increase. I'd like to see what they're using it for. Has the cost of chemicals really gone up that much? You know, I don't expect an answer right now, but guys, I think it's something we need to understand. Or is Smithfield again paying more than what we should be paying because of growth throughout the county? So, again, not expecting an answer right now, Ted, but if you could, Mike and Ted, you guys could get us some information on that.
Yes, sir.
Ted, any other questions, comments for Ted in the water sewer?
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to go to page forty-five before we exit the water and sewer department.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
On page forty-five, you see your debt service and your contingency. We have two loans that we have debt service on. The first two that you see there, 166, 114, and 131, 343, that both will mature in 2026. The last one, the larger one, 313, 676, is the Booker Dairy Road Project where we just put in water and sewer for the new road over there. We did a good job refinancing this and bringing these costs down to where this is going to mature in March, actually, a year from next March, March of 2022. So, we only actually have two more payments to make before that matures, and that's important as we go forward if we acquire any more debt in the future, to see that debt payment mature and leave us. We also have a contingency here. You can see $333,000 in contingency for next year, and again, your salary adjusted line of $32,000 for water sewer and water plant. I'll entertain any questions anybody has on that.
I got one real quick question, Mike. It still sticks with me about the conditions of our roads in Smithfield. The... I don't know what that noise is. Anyways, I know Mr. Credo mentioned about undercutting the road and having to make repairs to water line. I saw in the budget somewhere there was a mini paver. Ted, my question is, is do your department fix that, or is that something that the other departments are helping you with, or are we contracting it out to get it fixed?
So, patch replacements, we've gone back and forth on this. The current situation is we will notify Public Works, and I think Lenny's guys go out and fix, or they could either fix it themselves or contract it. It all depends. I believe the, like, for the asphalt and the stone and whatnot, we purchased that. That's what that supply line was all about, is the, you know, the cost of going into the road. So, we purchased all that, and I believe they contracted out at a small, at an efficient price, and we have a contractor do that for patch replacement.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you. We can talk about that in the next session. I had some ideas about that. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, this is what we have for the utility funds at this time. This was kind of the spot that I had to conclude the meeting unless you want to try to start into the general fund tonight. Otherwise, my plan was to recess the meeting to either Tuesday or Thursday next week when we could start the general fund, and we would probably start off with non-departmental requests.
Okay. Any objections to that, gentlemen? Or would you like to keep going on the general fund tonight? We're probably not going to hear any objections.
Mayor, personally, I would like us to do as little just on this phone call as possible for fairness to our department heads. But, I think you just said next week, so I guess that would be another telephone call?
Next week, I think. Or however we decide to do it. But, I think it would have to be a phone call, or a WebEx, or something. I will say, though, guys, I mean, I've been very pleased with how this has gone. I think it's been, in my opinion, it's been one of the most productive nights as far as moving through things that I can remember, so... I don't... I understand your concerns and comments, though, Travis, but I just want to say, I think it's gone very well. I think you guys, hats off to you guys for, you know, handling it. Let me tell you, I've been on about four or five WebEx calls today, and this one's probably been the best one.
Mayor, I'd love to talk to you. I have some ideas. I'll give you a call whenever you have... Not the title counts up tonight. Perhaps you could help with that.
Sure. No problem, sir. Any other comments for this evening? If not, we need to decide when we can recess too. Any other further comments on the budget for tonight, gentlemen? So, I'm not sure if everybody's had a chance to look at their schedule yet. I think, Mike, you said Tuesday or Thursday of next week?
Yeah, that was my thought. That seemed to be last year, the dates that worked best for the council, so I'm kind of going on history.
Either one works for me.
Tuesday works better for me.
I'm good with either day.
We're talking Tuesday, the 28th?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Any day that week's fine with me besides Wednesday.
I'll say Tuesday if everybody's okay with that.
Tuesday works for me as well.
Can we do it at 6:30?
Sure. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we can. Anybody have a problem with starting at 6:30?
No, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Fine with me.
Yeah.
Mayor, I need our motion that we recess until the 28th at 6:30.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess till April 28th at 6:30. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? All right. Okay, gentlemen, we'll get back together next week. Thank you very much. Mike, Ted, Shannon, if you're still online, thank you. We'll discuss next week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Have a good evening.